All right, it's about 7:16 and let's call this meeting to order. May the clerk please call the roll?
City council members.
Here.
Ammons.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Hazen.
Here.
Jacobson.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Wu.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Here.
All right, we have approval of the minutes from previous meeting on August 14th, 2017. Are there any corrections?
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries. All right, next on the agenda are additions to the agenda. Are there any additions to the agenda tonight? No?
My deletion.
Ah, thank you. The clerk has requested that we hold or not cover today the last two items, a closed session, to discuss minutes of closed sessions and Resolution Number 2017-08059-R. Do we need a motion to remove those? Do I have any objections to removing those?
I'm fine with moving.
Okay, all right. Those have been removed for today. Public input. We have, and I please apologize if I mispronounce anybody's name ahead of time, I have Lily Bannon Hassan and Rebecca Lorette, and they, their topic is "Ready for 100 Town Hall."
Can I just interrupt? My name is Allison. First, sir, while this, I'll hear from some person back to 100 Town Hall.
Would you like to come up?
Yeah, so both of you are going to speak. I just wanted to...
Yeah, Allison, okay.
Yeah, we all filled out our own separate sheet, but we're here for the same purpose, so I thought we'd save time. Do I just go?
Everybody have a seat? Please, go ahead.
Okay. The reason that we're here is because we are a coalition of environmental groups. I represent the Sierra Club, and these gals represent the I Matter. It's a young students group, an environmental group. I am so glad we have some young people getting involved in this cause, I can't tell you. And then we have Lois Kane with Food and Water Watch. So you all have a piece of paper in front of you and an invitation. And we just want to invite you all to our town hall on September 11th. I realize that's the same night as your city council meetings, but we're going to try to get you all on the agenda first. And Diane Marlin, our mayor, is one of our panelists, and we're so pleased to have her. And we also have Mr. Aaron Ammons' wife, who will also be on the panel along with Scott Bennett and, who am I missing? Carol Ammons, I got her. Oh, and Scott Tess will be one of our speakers, too, so. So it will be at the transportation building, the train station, whatever you call it now. And we have an invitation plus a little letter with our names on it. So that's our main purpose for being here tonight, and we hope you all show up. We think it's an important time for community to have discussion about going 100% renewable energy, and all communities can come up with their own ways of doing it depending. And this is to help start that conversation. So, does anybody else want to add a few to bit?
And in front of you also is a fact sheet from Food and Water Watch. It's about climate chaos, basically, and how much time we really have to get off of fossil fuels. And we will be at the town hall also, so we hope to talk to you guys and answer questions and encourage you to sign on to helping Urbana get off fossil fuels.
All right.
Wonderful. Part of the conversation, please.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? No, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Marlin, for being one of our speakers.
The next person on the list is Darrell Cruz. Saw him back there. Do you wish to speak now? All right.
There is a strong and troubling shift in tone occurring at the federal level regarding policing and race in our country. Recent statements such as "It's okay to rough 'em up a little," pardoning a sheriff found guilty of racially profiling, comments suggesting white supremacist, supremacist monuments, culture are under attack, are all evidence of this shift in tone and policy. The council and the Urbana Police Department are to be commended for their efforts and professionalism when discussing the nexus of policing and race. Yet there still is a glaring and ongoing local problem, traffic stop racial disparities. To date, these disparities continue relatively unchanged. Unfortunately, the city council and UPD have failed to either justify the racial disparities, meaning explaining why they are acceptable, or taking any steps to modify UPD traffic law enforcement policies, tactics, and strategies to reduce these disparities. It is important to note that modifying traffic law enforcement tactics and strategies does not imply our streets will be less safe or the UPD will not be able to do its job. Quite the contrary. Improvements to both can occur if deliberate and thoughtful changes are made. In the email I recently sent to you, the UP data, UPD data identified at least eight areas of traffic stop pedestrian disparities: actual number of stops, non-step stops, age and race of drivers from 14 to 24, multiple stops, consent searches, dog sniffs, traffic stop arrests, and pedestrian stops. We know these statistically significant disparities have existed for many years and continue to exist today. The time has come to review and make appropriate changes to improve the effectiveness, fairness, and equity of current traffic enforcement policies. For far too long, we have avoided this discussion. Let's be clear what we are talking about here: strictly I dot traffic-defined stops, namely traffic safety stops and pretextual investigatory stops. We know from local data that pretextual investigatory stops show more racial disparity than just routine traffic stops. Yes, the council and UPD need to continue to collect more data, such as feedback cards from drivers, hold neighborhood meetings, expand educational outreach, and continue officer implicit bias training. But these steps clearly have not addressed the core cause of traffic stop racial disparities, traffic enforcement policies, methods, and tactics. In the document I emailed you, I listed 10 possible actions you should consider, two see especially pertinent here tonight in the light of what's going on in the country. The first one: if ad hoc hotspot policing is still practiced by the UPD, make changes to ensure that not individual officer discretion, but department policy and criteria determine hotspot locations, including command oversight of beat officer hotspot policing. And two: establish a departmental policy that pretextual investigatory stops are to be conducted only when reasonable suspicion of criminal behavior is clearly evident. Under the Constitution, all races are entitled and protected to be policed fairly and equitably. We are at a moment in our country's history when this value is being challenged. We cannot change the person in the White House, but we can't change for the better how we police African Americans in our local community. It is time for the city council to step up to the moment and place this discussion on an upcoming agenda.
You have one minute, Mr. Cruz.
Only with decisive action on your part will local policing methods be analyzed and changed that improve both public safety while reducing traffic stop racial disparities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Is there anybody else from the audience who would like to provide some input tonight? All right, let's move on to presentations. We have a presentation tonight for the Urbana City Sister Cities, the delegation visit to Malawi with Alderman Roberts.
So, we're taking a couple of moments of your time tonight to share with you a recent trip that committee members from the Urbana Sister City program took to Zomba, Malawi this August. And our visit was based on personal interest rather than a project, a grant project specifically, but we've done a lot of work as we approached our sister city partnership in Malawi. How do I make this full screen? If I go up here?
Well, you've got a PDF, not the, I'll try something up here like this right here.
Yeah, so if you want a full screen?
That's it.
You got it? As close as we can get?
Page down now, probably.
All right, so here. So, all right, so we went August 6th to 19th this year, and it was a journey of, I have to read this, over 14,000 miles, almost 15,000 miles, to our sister city in Eastern Africa, landing in Longue. We had several goals that we really didn't want to accomplish. One was to renew our sister city friendship with Zomba, Malawi. This is our oldest sister city. We were interested in meeting the elected officials. The last time that we visited, there were only staff members from the municipality, and in the couple of years that we had been there, there had been national elections, and they have a mayor and a city councils, council members. One of the important goals of our journey was to build rocket stoves, which are a high efficiency cooking stove to be placed in the cooking shelters at the Guardian Village in the Central Hospital. We also wanted to improve the sanitation by looking at the ablution block, how it was being run, whether it was functioning appropriately, and to pour a cement slab at the water tap at the Central Hospital in the Guardian Village, and to create a walking path from the ablution block to the cooking station and into the village. And for these, Scott Dossett originated a GoFundMe drive, and we were able to accomplish most of the fundraising to accomplish the construction of those projects before we left. We also visited several different schools in Zomba. In the past years, we had done a grant at three schools, Chikumveka, Thundu, and Chalomwe. We went back to visit the toilets that we had built to check on their condition and to bring several boxes of supplies to benefit the school and the young learners there. We always also visit the Jeans Church in Damasi, which was the original reason why our sister city kind of came to be. It was a trip in coordination with the Presbyterian Church here in town and the city of Damasi in Malawi. And the first visit that I took in 2007 kind of was a precursor to the establishment of the sister city relationship. And of course, when we go, we always like to see cultural and environmental beauty of the city of Zomba and the environs in Malawi. So I'm just going to take us through some things. We connected with some old friends. Musa Mwali and Charles Kalamba were members of the city administrative staff when we first went there in 2008 on our first grant project. We remain friends with them, and although Charles lives in the Longue, the capital at this time, and Mr. Mwali is the desk sergeant in Zomba, he still also spent a lot of time with his family in Longue. We were able to enjoy dinner at both their homes. We met the mayor of Zomba, Malia Lacosway Douglas, and the city staff and the new counselors. And I presented to the mayor a letter from Diane Marlin, our mayor, greetings, and to reestablish friendship through the newly-elected mayors in both communities. And actually, I have for the mayor, Mayor Marlin, letters from Mayor Douglas in Zomba, which I'll give to you. Scotty, do you want to talk about the Guardian Village?
Yeah, sure, just a bit. Just a quick note, we self-funded this entire trip with the exception of the rocket stove build that we did in the Guardian Shelter, and then the educational supplies that we distributed. Those were made possible by the grant that we have from the city of Urbana last year, so I want to thank everyone for that. We took almost $3,000 worth of supplies over to schools that are unimaginably in need. And another area like that, and the place that really has my heart, is the Guardian Village. Throw everything you know about first-world healthcare away. The professional staff at the hospital that serves probably 200,000 people in a region includes a thin layer of doctors, a thin layer of nurses, and if you need clean sheets, clean water, or food, a member of your family comes and takes care of you. In fact, we learned during this visit that usually that's two members of the family, and those people are called the Guardians. And then they live and work in the Guardian Village. And so some of those pictures that we'll see are from that area and show the things that we were doing during this trip. People cooking with three rock stoves, the lady there probably trying to prepare a meal, you know, down in the lower right, just some of us milling around one of the areas there.
And the stoves of these that they're using produce a lot of smoke, which fills the shelter and is very difficult to breathe?
Yeah, WHO numbers, even if you have them for upper respiratory disease in Africa are just sky-high, and so one of the things about the rocket stoves is to reduce the amount of material you have to bring down off the slope and to clean up the air. And essentially, what you do, as opposed to the three rock stove where you're cooking right on the ground, is just elevate that fire, give it a little draft, and then build a chimney. I've been workshopping those with Sudanese and Cameroonian and Malawans for years in the backyard, and so that's what we're, I think we're going to see the finished product here that we built in Malawi. Materials acquisition, bricks. It's bricks and a piece of metal, basically. So all of them are from indigenous materials. Some of the ones that we've purchased, manufactured, and then brought over just have not lived well, and so we're trying to take a technology over there that they can essentially just use indigenous materials. And although you will see fine mortar finishes, mud mortar is a perfectly acceptable alternative to that, to kind of finish the exterior of the stove.
And that center picture is, you give Scotty 10 minutes with somebody who has five bricks, and he'll show them how to make a rocket stove.
That's right, that's what we do.
So he's taught a lot of workshops spontaneously?
Pretty simple. So we just lay it out, and then we cover it. Down in the lower right-hand corner, you can see the finished stoves. If you're interested in more detailed pictures or information, I'd be happy to, you know, I'm always happy to talk about rocket stoves.
Right. So we did this in a matter of one day, and we built six stoves in the unit. They had removed all the broken stoves that had been in that shelter, and we could have built 40 more. Then we went to the ablution block, which was actually in the very same location, just around, you know, like about 400 feet away. We built this ablution block with a grant from this, the Gates Foundation filtered through Sister Cities International. We were one of 17 cities in the United States awarded this grant project. We had $115,000. We built toilets in three schools, and we built the ablution block, which allows them to wash, wash their clothes, take a shower, go to the bathroom, and basically maintain personal health. This year, we got a sign from our public works department acknowledging our contribution and our sister city partnership with Zomba to create this using the AAU PAP grant. We noticed that the residents were being charged 40 kwacha per visit to the bathrooms, well, to about, what, six cents?
Yeah.
And many of the residents could not afford that, so we had a conversation with the manager of the ablution block to find a way of reducing the cost so that some of the poorest people could go for free. Six cents was too much.
Yeah, the problem is if the Guardians can't take care of themselves, then they get sick. So now you have half the village coming to take care of half a dozen people that are trying to take care of the primary person. This is the GoFundMe project. We needed about 30 meters of sidewalk, and we want to rebuild an area where the ladies get water. Right now, they're basically standing on rocks in the middle of a fetid kind of damp area that you see here, and I think there may be a kind of a close-up of this in the next slide, so.
I don't think so. Don't think so. We haven't, we didn't get that one particular part of the project poured while we were there, but it's on the way. Trash accumulation around the Guardian Village was once totally cleaned up when we were there under the AAU PAP project, but in the convening six years, the people who are, you know, the population keeps changing as new people become ill, and people are coming in from the rural areas, and they're pretty much operating like they do in their own home villages. There's a place that's designated as a trash mound, and it just grows and grows and grows. One of the saddest things that I saw personally was a person eating their lunch, sitting on top of the trash in the Guardian Village, right next to the cooking stoves. So the trash is actually piling up right against the wall where they're making their meals. Meg, this is something that was your heart's desire. Would you tell us a little bit about the project for delivering school supplies?
Well, we've worked with three different schools over the last 10 years, and we took school supplies, one big box for each school, including materials similar to what we use for ESL kids, and some were bilingual with Chechewa, which is their native language, and English. We had lots of pencils and basic school supplies, and it was probably about half of what they would get in a whole year. And we had one big box, they have like 4,000 kids in these schools. They were very appreciative, so appreciative of everything that Urbana and the citizens have given over these last 10 years through the city and through just their own generosity. So that's the main thing I want to say, is that the people of Zomba were so appreciative and so thankful and so, so loving toward Urbana and the people here. And they kept saying, "We don't take this for granted. Thank you so much."
We're, we're beginning to have the possibility of working with a new grant in Malawi with our partner, Sister Cities in Zomba. It's coming through the University of Illinois. And since we had time during our visit to visit the University of Malawi Chancellor's College, which is really where the whole connection with our friends in Zomba started, because when I went in 2007 as a book designer from the University of Illinois Press, my personal project was to drop off six books at the Chancellor's Library. And when I did that, I met the director of the library, Mr. Vua Puri, who became a staunch supporter of our sister city project. And this is the campus of the Chancellor's College, University of Malawi. The library is straight ahead, and we were able to meet with not only the head of the political department, political science department at the college, but Mr. Vua Puri got us to meet the head of the college itself. He's called the principal, and we had a half an hour discussion with him. And it was very, very fruitful, and we're hoping that new developments will be soon coming forward to share with you. A trip to Malawi always includes a trip to the small village of Damas, where the Presbyterian Church here in Urbana first established a partnership through, a long time ago, years of connection with one of the graduate students at the college, U of I, in agriculture, who returned to their native land and became important in the ministry in the city, in the municipality, the government of Malawi. So we go back to the church, which was actually built through funds from the Presbyterian community here, and we visited a Chechewa-speaking service, and we have here, it turned out to be a youth program, so the children of the community, the church community, were conducting the service, and then the women's choir sang and kind of danced a little bit. And we were able to leave a box of supplies that we carried over to them from the Presbyterian Church here in town, and we were able to see their new preschool, and so there's photographs of the preschool. At which place, because there was a pile of bricks, Scotty Dossett built another rocket stove, which they decided immediately to install in their cooking shed. All right, Scotty, you want to talk about this project?
Sure, this was an interesting side, and I made a promise to talk to the Imam at the mosque here in Urbana and try to see if we could get some traction to help this amazing woman named Munira, who has pretty much bootstrapped this complex, which probably includes five acres, everything has to have a wall, and a fully sustained area where she's taking people actually past their secondary level in education. They can get certificates there that they can use to advance. Tailoring was a big thing there. This is the library shelves that were, that they had built, and we spent some time over the free library today, and I think we'll be trolling for sort of like current technical management texts to try to get over there to her. We'll figure out exactly how, you know, as we roll through, but...
Yeah, after we toured her compound, she said, "Well, we're going to meet at the library." So we walked into this room, and there were like numerous shelves, but all of them had like three books, four books on a shelf, and we thought, "Well, we can help out here." So you'll hear more about the book drive, I think, for our sister city program. Well, okay, here's just a couple of pictures of some of the fun things about the city of Zomba. We visited the market. We met by chance one of the members of their local committee for sister cities. We had a couple of meals at Tasty Bites, which was one of the more popular and wonderful restaurants downtown, and we bought fabrics, and we all decided to get some things built and made for ourselves, and Scotty Dossett's wearing his shirt. And I didn't wear mine, I'm sorry, but maybe you'll see a picture of me later on. "The Arts of Selling Potatoes" is displayed in this beautiful scenario here, a roadside stand we stopped. It was, you know, halfway between two cities, and we were driving on the highway. You just pull off, and you can buy your vegetables right off, you know, right out of the pot from somebody's garden. And I think that people at the farmer's market in Urbana could learn something from, as far as vegetable sales here. We were invited to the home of Mr. Puri. He's about to retire from his position as the director of the library. He was very courteous to invite us, very nice to invite us into his home, and we met his brother, and also his son and daughter, and had a wonderful meal with him and a great time. It was one of the last things that we did in Zomba. And we did have a conversation with the city staff before we left, talking the nuts and bolts of getting things coordinated at the ablution block and the completion of some of the projects that we initiated. of the projects that we initiated, seeing a way forward to new collaborations, and just really getting a chance to, again, renew some wonderful friendships that have been built over the last seven years through multiple visits that were forwarded to us by our grant projects. So at this point, we're pretty much going on our own bootstraps, you know, and raising the money ourselves to go over there, but maybe in the future we'll have some more travel funds available. It's possible that members of the, the city council would like to travel to Malawi. So we had a farewell dinner party, and down there in the corner, you can see, I got my new shirt, too. And Roger, Rogers, the guy in the red, was on our very first community committee for Sister Cities when the whole thing started eight or nine years ago. And we, I haven't seen him since then. It's been eight years since I've seen him, and man, it was just great to see him again. And so, you know, we also wanted to see the countryside, and so we went to Lawanda National Park. It's only about an hour's drive north of Zomba. There's a beautiful lodge there where we can have, where you can stay overnight if you want to. We were just making a day trip, and you'll see some of the animals that we saw. And some of the incredible baobab trees that grow in this particular part of Malawi, incredibly interesting and beautiful and huge trees.
Dennis?
Yes.
Here at twenty minutes.
Okay, one more. We're almost done. Rivers, here's a picture of some river, river trip. Some of the animals that one can see in the park, including, you can, fifteen feet from the elephants. And finally, we went to Lake Malawi for our last day and took a boat ride. The water's so clear that you can see the fish, beautiful blue and tiger-stripe fish. Scenes at Lake Malawi. A school class was coming down to the water to also observe the fish. And that was our last evening in Africa.
Yeah, just a thanks to the council and to the mayor for the funding that we get to help us do some of this stuff. It felt really wonderful when Dennis put his two checked boxes onto the scale at O'Hare, and he was at ninety-nine pounds. So because of the citizens of Urbana and the kindness of the council, we took about three hundred pounds worth of stuff to drop on schools over there. That, that's, that feels really good, and I appreciate the support for that.
And we have gifts now.
So the mayor of Zomba has sent some special fabric for our mayor. The people are very artistic, and there's incredible fabric and other arts everywhere.
We have a couple of things for you, Mayor. A hat with the seal, with the seal over the seal of Zomba.
You could wear it briefly. You could model it briefly.
It's beautiful.
If you're watching, Phyllis, I'll take it off.
Yay! And the mayor wanted me to send you enough beautiful fabric to make your own outfit.
It's beautiful.
And she sends you some letters, which are the speeches that she, she gave to our meeting during the day.
Nice.
Wow, thank you.
So those are the gifts. And you all have a small token from Malawi, and you all have a keychain card and more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
Thank you.
Thank you, Phyllis.
All right, next up, we have staff reports. I don't see any staff reports tonight. Okay, the first ordinance on the agenda is ordinance number 2017-048, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance for fiscal year 2017-18, budget amendment number two with various items on it. Elizabeth?
I don't think I can top that last presentation, but, so this, this really does pick up a variety of, for the most part, relatively small items. One of those is a tree planting grant that we will receive from the U.S. Department of Agriculture. We didn't anticipate that in budgeting, and so we have to reflect both the revenue and expense in the budget. A minor change in position classification in the city clerk's office, which was paid for by a reduction in another line item. Several items here are really just differences in timing, things that were not completed in the last fiscal year, where we have to roll funds into the FY18 budget. So for the financial system implementation, we're well underway, but still it was difficult to predict the exact timing of what would be spent in fiscal seventeen versus fiscal eighteen. The work order system for Public Works, which will not start now until fiscal eighteen. Again, timing on the acquisition of the lot south of the Philo Road Fire Station was budgeted last year, but the closing didn't happen until after July one. Some timing issues on a couple of community development grants, and also some minor adjustments. And on social service funding, an increase of five thousand. There was some miscommunication about the amount that was budgeted between the two funds, between general fund and community development block grant. A rebudget of some unspent funds for campus lighting improvements to pay for a downtown parking study. And then both a rebudget and a correction to the budget to purchase a spray patch truck in Public Works for $235,000. It's a lot of money, but this is a real efficiency improvement for Public Works in terms of how they do that work. The other items there are very minor, so I'd be happy to answer questions.
Questions? Bill?
Yeah, just a couple. The downtown parking study, I'm not sure what the timing of that's going to be, but it's probably going to be changing pretty dramatically over the next six months or a year as House of Commons moves out and changes offices and everything, so is there a, is there a idea when that's going to occur?
I believe they're already working on it, but I'm sure that they're anticipating changes that are known when they do that study.
So that, okay.
It's, it's Public Works that's the lead on that study, so.
Okay, and then for the spray patch truck, was there a reason why that wasn't purchased last year? It was budgeted for last year, is that right?
Um, yeah, I don't, I thought I saw John.
For the most part, it was just researching the equipment that was available.
Okay.
And giving the crews an opportunity to.
Try them out.
To check the vehicle in real-world conditions on the streets and evaluate it, just the timing with all the different manufacturers to be able to thoroughly investigate the vehicles early.
Okay, and has there been a cost-benefit study done on that to know what the payback period for that would be?
We, I don't think we've actually done the study, but we take five to six individuals at home to perform that task, or use it if you want.
Okay, so just, since you don't have a microphone, I'll repeat, you said you'd probably be able to, instead of having five or six people working on filling potholes, you'd be able to do it with one person with this vehicle, right?
Yes, correct.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Eric?
So, also, this item says that this vehicle would produce a better product in, in filling potholes. Does that imply, does that imply that the patches would last longer?
One of the, one of the biggest calls that we're looking for in that truck is that, I'm sure everybody's noticed, the Vine Street Viaduct and the Springfield and Lincoln Avenue intersection, where that every time we make a seal-type patch where the pavement is breaking apart but actually hasn't come out, when we seal over that, our goal is to try and make those smoother. We're not going to be able to make them perfect, but we want to try and make them smoother. The actual method of, of the materials that we use, the aggregate size may be smaller, but for the most part, I think some of our patching that we do, and that holds up very well, based on the conditions in which we are doing those patching projects on. Yes, I hope they will last a little bit longer than, than what we've been doing recently with spray patching.
Sounds good.
All right, any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that.
Thank you.
That ordinance, ordinance 2017-08-048, revising the annual budget on various items, be sent to city council with approval.
Second?
Motion made by Dennis, seconded in by Bill? Eric? Eric, we'll second it by Eric. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries. Resolution number 2017-08-056R, an ordinance approving and authorizing execution of the agreement for termination of lease for Cunningham Children's Home, 1301 South Cunningham Avenue. Lori?
Thank you very much. So this is a different kind of case than I'm used to presenting in front of you, so I will try to make it clear what it is that we are proposing. So the subject property, I'll get to in just a moment, but to give you a little context, Cunningham Children's Home, which you will hear a little bit more about in a moment when a couple of representatives, or at least one, will, will come up to give you some background. But Cunningham Children's Home at the corner of Cunningham and Country Club Road, which is also Country Club, once it crosses Cunningham, turns into Perkins, has approximately thirty-five acres at this site, and in 2005, the city's comprehensive plan envisioned an expansion of Cunningham, and if my mouse there goes, into this area, and the comprehensive plan also envisioned a change in the use, the future use of this corner area to be commercial. Community business, I think, was the future land use designation. So in order to realize the comprehensive plan, Cunningham Children's Home is in the process of selling this corner lot, or, excuse me, creating a, a corner lot in which to sell. It's almost four acres there, and it's known in the document I'll refer to later as the development area. That lot is intended for future commercial development. However, a portion of that lot, oops, is subject to, about half an acre is subject to a lease that the city holds. Now, in 1976, the city got a lease with, it was owned by the county at the time, for this area in order to open an information center. So in the seventies, information centers were all the rage, I think, and the idea there was to have a place for maps and brochures about the place that you're visiting to be. At the time, in 1976, this area was pretty close to the northern limits of the city, so one would get right off the interstate, come on down Cunningham, pull into the information center, and get your map. Since then, the Internet has been invented, GPS, cell phones, so in 2005, that information part of the information center was removed. So the city has not used it for an information center since 2005, despite the lease, which I said was entered in 1976 and is good for 199 years, which is, means it, it would expire in 2175. So we have this lease on this half an acre, which is part of this future development site that Cunningham would like to sell for development. So Cunningham approached us and said, "How do we terminate this lease, if you would be willing?" Because it does really encumber a prime site for redevelopment, being right at the corner of major intersection there, right in the spot where someone would want to put a building in order to catch the attention of the traffic, and Cunningham in particular. So after discussion, we realized that the way to terminate that lease is to create a new agreement, so that is what is before you tonight, is, is an ordinance approving and authorizing execution of a new agreement. There's a few things that are interesting about this site that we tried to put some provisions in the agreement to help mitigate, so I'm going to describe those here. First of all, in addition to the information center, which we removed, we also put up that welcome sign, welcome to Urbana sign, approximately here, that is still there. We do have a provision in the proposed agreement which would give the city some time to remove it, so in the event a sale of the property is not imminent, we would be allowed to keep the sign there until such time that it is imminent. The idea would be that we can move it elsewhere, or since Cunningham is subject to a beautification study, perhaps there's a different way we can welcome people to Urbana than the large welcome to Urbana sign that currently exists. So there might be a way to modernize or to update our, our signs. So that's one of the provisions in the agreement. Another of the provisions in the agreement, and here's just a close-up of the area, this was the little parking area for the information center. So one of the other provisions handles trees. So the, the lease premises, this half an acre thereabouts, contains a number of trees, most of which I think were, were planted around 1976 or so, so fairly mature trees, including a legacy tree down at the corner. So what the agreement does is it proposes a provision that would, and that Cunningham Children's Home has agreed to, that they would plant one tree on the rest of their site, the other thirty-some acres, in the event any of these trees are taken down by development. So not only would they be willing to replant trees for this leased area, but they've also agreed to replant one tree for anyone that's taken down in the whole development area, so this whole yellow area. So that's an additional, maybe ten trees or so, in addition to the twenty-three that are within the leased area. So a fairly generous tree replanting agreement there. So the other provision in the agreement has to do with sidewalks. So this might get a little complicated, let me try to break it down. Currently, along Country Club Road, there are no sidewalks, except for about 244 feet right here, and it just ends. As a result of the subdivision of this lot, so the creation of this lot means that there's a requirement to construct sidewalk, so the prospective new owner of this lot, upon redevelopment, would put in this stretch of sidewalk, but that would still leave about eight hundred feet without sidewalk. As part of this agreement, Cunningham has committed to build something there, and that's where it gets a little complicated. The city's master plan, the bicycle master plan, does call for an eight-foot-wide multi-use path along this stretch here and continuing on to Crystal Lake Park, et cetera. So Cunningham would love to be able to build right-of-way that eight-foot-wide multi-use path. They are not required to do so. Normally, what happens with these kinds of paths is the city goes in after the fact, buys both the right-of-way to build it, and then builds it. What Cunningham is agreed to do is, if they raise enough money to build that eight-foot-wide path, the city would then do a cost share up to $50,000. I don't know exactly how much that might cost, but it's going to cost a heck of a lot more than $50,000, in addition to a right-of-way acquisition price, which we did not appraise, but is probably also in the neighborhood of $40,000 to $50,000. So in the event their fundraising, though, does not allow them to build this eight-foot-wide path, what they would do is build a four-foot-wide sidewalk now. The city would cost share up to 50% of that cost, or up to $40,000. So the estimate of a four-foot-wide sidewalk in that area is about $80,000, so 50% is the $40,000 that the city would cost share. So that is written in the agreement as, if you can do the eight-foot-wide path, great, the city will put in the $50,000. If you can't do that, do a four-foot-wide sidewalk now, and then later, the city can come in and do another four-foot in order to achieve that eight-foot-wide path. So those are the main provisions of the agreement. So I, I do need to correct, the memo talked about fiscal impact, although termination of the lease itself would have no fiscal impact, because the city has not been paying lease payments, for instance, on an annual basis. However, obviously, any cost share for the sidewalk or the path would have that $40,000 to $50,000 fiscal impact. But as I mentioned, it means that we get the right-of-way now, instead of down the road, and we don't need to pay for the right-of-way. So it's a bit of a wash there in terms of, of cost outlay. So as a result, we have put forward this proposed agreement to terminate the lease, and just as a reminder, the city has not used this as an information center, as it was intended in 1976, since they took out the information, or since we took out the information in 2005. And in exchange for terminating the lease, what we are getting. And in exchange for terminating the lease, what we are getting is a generous tree replacement agreement, some time to move the welcome sign, and of course, potentially, an eight-foot wide multi-use path in the immediate future, rather than down the road, once the city has enough funds to construct it otherwise. So as a result, the city staff is recommending approval of the ordinance, which would approve the agreement to terminate the lease. And as I said, there are members from Cunningham Children's Home that would like to address the committee.
All right, let's go ahead and do that, and if people have questions afterwards.
Thank you, Lori. Mayor, council members, thank you for allowing me to make some brief comments. 1895, Mary and Joseph Cunningham gave the home to what is today an organization called United Methodist Women. Fast forward today, we are a premier provider of residential services for abused and neglected children. We provide transitional services for youth 18 to 21. And we provide educational services, both for the children who live with us, but 70 other children who live in both, or Champaign-Urbana, but far as away as Charleston. The Education Recreation Center, and this is what we're paving the path for here, is part of the master campus plan, was developed 20 years ago, a lot of thought has gone into it. In fact, the parcel was originally put on the market in 2005, but not really knowing what the footprint of the Education Recreation Center was, we postponed that to make sure that everything lined up, and I think that was a wise decision. The Education Recreation Center, it's 50,000 square feet, $14 million. We're going to fundraise about $8.5 million of that. Really state-of-the-art facility. Line of sight, safety, sensory rooms, cameras, just, it has everything that you would expect a school to serve a special population like ours would need. And so we're very, very excited to really put the capstone, if you will, on a master campus plan that was developed over 20 years ago. And so hopefully, with state funding, initially, the financing plan for this project, we, as you know, state funding's a little tenuous right now, and, just a little bit. And we think this is a smart move to go ahead and put this on the market for commercial development. We're going to be pretty picky about who buys it. There's certain covenants that our board is going to require. And so we are, I'm prepared to answer any questions that you might have about either the master campus plan or any provision in the lease.
All right, questions? Dean?
I'm just curious, was there ever a monetary component to the lease, or was it basically just donated through a lease?
We inherited the lease when the county had had it with the city, it was, I think it was a $1 lease originally, for 199 years. It's a great deal, I think, for the city. But, so I think those were the original provisions of it, so the really smart people are behind me, so.
Well, that's $1 more than we had, right? Thank you.
Eric?
Maybe this was in the packet and I overlooked it, what is the, what is the anticipated zoning for that commercially developable, commercially developable area?
We do have an application on file for rezoning to B3, general business.
Aaron?
So the blue parcel, first of all, thank you for the presentation, both of you, and for all the work that you do with Cunningham Children's Home.
Thank you, councilman.
So the blue area is, in fact, we own it as the city, is that, how does, I'm just trying to...
We lease that area, so we don't own it, the, they are the property owners. We paid $1 in 1976, yes.
And that's it.
Okay. All right, I just want to make sure I understood that fully. And then, so I heard you say that there was going to be an attempt, or there would be $8.5 million of fundraising for the development? I'm just making sure I understand that.
For the Education Recreation Center, which is outside of the parcel on the corner, let me see.
I can see the large area there.
So yeah, this is where the Education Recreation Center will be placed. This will be primarily, the 50,000 square foot building will go here, there'll be a parking lot here, and then a new entry to the main campus will come in through here. Of this $14 million project, we're relying on $8.5 million of private funding to make that a reality.
Okay, now I understand it better. And so the entryway that you would want to come into the complex would certainly be accentuated by the eight-foot multipurpose path right there on each side of it, right?
Yeah, absolutely, so the entryway would run right about here, would come up to what we would call our Spiritual Life Center. For those familiar with our campus, it looks similar to a chapel. And so the bike path, we would make that aesthetically pleasing there, and actually, we'll have to move the entry of our campus back a little bit than what was originally planned to accommodate the bike path.
Okay, and I think, Lori, you said that the four-foot wide, 800 feet, would be something around $40,000?
The city cost share, if it's approved as part of this agreement, would be up to $40,000, which is 50% of the total cost, estimated at $80,000.
So if it's estimated at 80 for four, then am I, my logical multiplication says 160 for eight-foot wide?
Of course, it hasn't been engineered yet, so the wider it is, the more work you need to do, and you might need to work around other things, so it, that's probably roughly.
160, and Bill Gray's not going to be upset with you for saying that?
If he is, he'll tell me later.
Oh, okay, I thought she was going to say he'll get over it, but I don't know. So, okay, I was just trying to get an idea about what the, what that cost would be. But it sounds like, I mean, raising $8.5 million is a lot, doesn't sound like, that's, obviously, you guys think you can raise it.
That's right. And we're about, our campaign is, we're at around $5.5 million now, so we're closing in on it. We think, once we start pushing dirt, there'll be additional momentum gained from the project.
Who do you hire to fundraise, no, I'm just kidding.
We have a lot of faithful stewards across the state, so we're very blessed.
Thank you, appreciate your answers.
Bill?
Yeah, I think this is a pretty good deal for both of us, I think it works out pretty well. So looking at this picture, does it look like the bus drop-off area, that's what you said would align basically with that, I guess, Gulfview Drive, the one straight across?
Yeah, if, for, by way of orientation, the buses would come in through here, our building would be here, and they would, they would marshal along here in front of the Education Recreation Center. So there would be no bus marshaling on Country Club Road, near the bike path, et cetera. So bus marshaling would all occur on our, on the new site development, and possibly in the parking lot. We have plans for overflow, if the project grows, we'll marshal additional buses in that parking lot.
Okay, yeah, I think that worked out great. I know we have a bike master plan showing a trail there, and I don't know how we're going to get through the next little segment to Division, but we'll worry about that later, I guess. But I think even as it is, will be useful, especially, as you said, there will be a curb cut right there across from that street that comes down from the north. They don't have any sidewalks on that side, so anybody in a wheelchair that comes down that road and wants to go to Cunningham will be able to get right in at the curb cut.
Yeah, I personally pick people up in the winter that are walking along this road, myself and others. It's just, it's very dangerous in the winter after they plow. Young families will walk from this neighborhood, they'll walk and traverse here to try to get, do the bus routes, et cetera, up to this corner. So it'd be great to have, and we have reached out to the county already. We have an offer to cost share with them, so Mr. Snyder, don't, hope he's not watching, so.
So yeah, I appreciate all the work you've done on this. And I took the tour of your, at your 120th anniversary, a couple of years ago, I took the tour and enjoyed learning more about it, and have watched it over the years grow, and it's really a unique and valuable resource we have for the whole county, and just proud to, proud to have it here.
Thank you, I think we passed out things for you to look at in a little bit more detail there. And of course, all the council members, I think as long as you don't come in groups of two or more, right, we can accommodate a tour for you. So if it's more than that, I think we have to take minutes or something, but we can do that.
And one other question, I guess more for Lori. Mentioned a 40-foot right-of-way they'd have to dedicate, that seems large. Is this one of those where the property line is down the middle of the street or something, or?
So I'm sorry if I wasn't clear, so the 40-foot right-of-way is from the center line of the street.
Okay.
Previously, they would have needed to, if it was just for a sidewalk, they would have only needed to dedicate a 30-foot from the center line of the street. But they have been willing to dedicate the entire 40-foot, so that we could ultimately build the multi-use path, even if it doesn't get constructed in, soon.
And I guess in the contract, it refers to that, when it mentions that, it says Exhibit A. And Exhibit A is the one that kind of just shows the end of it, doesn't show the whole length. So I don't know if you want to look at that contract and make sure that's clear, I don't...
We can do that, it's also shown in the plat, and that's under process, so we'll make sure everything's consistent, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
All right, Aaron?
Yeah, just one more question for you, could you say your first name again?
Marlin.
Marlin.
Yeah, spelled the exact way.
I don't, I didn't see them, I don't have it in front of me. So you said that you're about $5.5 million into it, and you, when you start pushing dirt, you think it'll happen? So groundbreaking coming soon, or something like that?
Yeah, groundbreaking, we just had, the mayor was there just a week ago, so, yeah.
I missed that, okay. And so you already have developers and everyone chosen to move forward?
That's correct, we've, we are poised to sign a contract with Johncos Construction, and prevailing wage, of course, because it will be public dollars committed to it. So we're very excited to get going.
One of the things that I ask everyone, I'm still pushing very strongly for the minority participation goals on those particular projects. Do you have anything like that established or ingrained in this project?
I don't think we have specific requirements within our contractual language. Pardon me? Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, other questions? All right, my turn, I have two, one for each. So congratulations on raising that amount of funds, that's very impressive. I wanted to ask if the amount that you are aiming to raise include the amount for the sidewalk?
That, the sidewalk, whether it's eight-foot or four-foot, will be somewhat contingent upon the success of our capital campaign.
So it is included in the $8 million that you're hoping to raise?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, all right, and then...
But again, I'm very confident that we'll raise that money.
Well, you've already raised a lot. And then Lori, I had a question about the money that the city was going to be obligated for, is that already in our budget? Or is that going to have to come through as a budget amendment?
There is a sidewalk fund that this could be taken out of, so that's in existence now.
And do you know, this is why I called you, what our sidewalk fund amount is budgeted for the year?
I don't off the top of my head, however, between this and another project, I think it would be exhausted, so it's not a large sum. I'm going to also step on Bill Gray's toes and say it's in the neighborhood of 75 to 80, and I can get you a real number before council next week. How's that?
That sounds great, thank you. All right, any other questions?
I'm sorry, I do have a follow-up, Marlin.
Yeah, absolutely.
So the name of the contractor again was?
Johncos.
How do you spell that?
J-O-H-N-C-O.
Oh, John, John Coles, that's a little odd for me. And the, is that a local contractor?
They're out of a small, smaller town near Bloomington, correct? We did pre-qualify, I think, seven contractors, most of those local. The bids came in pretty, pretty close, but they won it in a sealed bid contest by $7,000, I think, so it was very close bidding, and so...
I guess that's $7,000 more towards the sidewalk, though, right?
That's exactly right, that's exactly right.
Eight-foot sidewalk, I should say.
Yeah, eight-foot.
All right, thanks a lot, man, I appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate it, councilman.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
With no further questions, do I have a motion from the council?
Moot, did we send this to council with recommendation for approval?
I'll second.
All right, motion by Aaron, seconded in by, I can't read, Jared, thank you.
Not Dean Hazen.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. All right, our resolution number, is this right, 2017-08-057R, resolution to approve an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Urbana and Illinois Department of Revenue, inspections of liquor license holders premises, fire.
Thank you, before you, you've got a resolution authorizing us to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois Department of Revenue for the inspection of liquor license holders premises.
Brian, can I interrupt?
Yes.
Jared?
Thanks, sorry, sorry, Marlon, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I need to recuse myself pursuant to state liquor law. I can't, I can't, I have to go in the corner and close my ears.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, on the discussion, on January 13th, you approved one for FY17. It was halfway through the year, and less than six months, Phil completed all the liquor inspections, along with the fire prevention permit inspections, the code enforcement inspections. He was pushed a little bit to get it done, because in actuality, by the time he learned how to input the inspections into the state system, he had about four and a half months to do the inspections. So we're starting a little earlier this year, we see no problem in completing these inspections, along with the fire prevention permit inspections. So if you don't have any questions on this, I mean, we recommend that you go ahead and approve this, and we'll do this with our code inspections again this year.
All right, questions? Bill?
Since he's doing these inspections anyway, we have some additional city ordinances. It requires some posting of specific language and signs in the gambling establishments that have liquor license. I wonder if we thought about having him check that at the same time. I know that really, the, I guess, accounting, who, somebody else enforces that, but it seems like if he's going to be there anyway, if he could check those out while he's there.
That was brought up last year, and he agreed to check those.
Okay, thanks.
All right, Eric, did you still have a question?
No, I completely agree with Bill, I'm supportive of that aspect of the inspection. So, but, but I do have a question. Were all of the establishments with gambling devices found to be, you know, to have the appropriate signage?
I don't have the answer to that question, Philip would know that.
Okay, I, yeah, I guess I'd like, I'd like to know that.
Okay.
All right, other questions? I had a question, and perhaps it's moot, but I was reading through the contract. And on number 16 and number 18, availability of appropriations and fiscal funding. So it says, according to this, that obligations of the state will cease immediately without penalty of further payment being required if, in any fiscal year, the Illinois General Assembly funding source fails to appropriate or otherwise available sufficient funds for this agreement. So my question is, this is the first year we've had a budget. Was last year the first time that the fire department entered into this agreement with the state?
It was.
So I'm assuming they paid their bills?
They paid up front last year.
Okay.
This contract is a little different, because if we don't complete all the inspections, we have to refund money. So they pay, now they're, on this contract, they'll pay 50% up front, and the other 50% when we complete the inspections. So they've changed the compensation, the method of compensation.
And just out of curiosity, are all buildings inspected by the fire department every year? I mean, all types of these businesses?
Fire prevention permits are done every year. A business that's not a fire prevention permit, we do every other year.
Okay, great, any other questions? Aaron?
Just a quick comment, I wanted to make sure that the record and the minutes would accurately reflect that this is the first year we had a budget in the last two and a half years. We've always had a budget, just the last two and a half years, we haven't had a budget. Just want to make sure that the record properly reflected that.
Thank you very much, Aaron. State budget?
State budget, that is, state budget.
All right, other questions? Now, do I have a motion?
Motion to send this to council with recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
Aaron Ammons made the motion and Dennis seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries. Jared, do you want to join us again? Uncover your ear with, we'll get you earmuffs for next time. All right, so, all right, the next item on the agenda is ordinance number two thousand seventeen zero eight zero four nine and ordinance amending Urbana City Code Chapters one and fourteen, legal. Jim?
I'll take a different seat for this one. John Collins from Public Works is joining me because John Collins has a lot of experience, the most experience, with the city's interaction with special events. The city, as you know, because you deal with a number of them every year, hosts many special events, but there are many that do not come to the city. So you may or may not be aware of them, maybe a bar holding a special event or some other kind of organization. In October two thousand two, the city adopted a policy, an internal policy regarding the regulation of special events. That policy was amended in July two thousand eight and then in January two thousand sixteen. When I got involved with the special policies and reviewing special, special event education, or excuse me, applications, I had serious problems with the fact that the city had a policy which regulated sponsors of special events, requiring them to apply for permits. And yet, there was no real special event ordinance on the books. So over a period of about, what, about a year almost, John, John and I and the department heads developed a special events ordinance which you have before you. The policy that was in place and still is in place, pending adoption of this ordinance, covers special events, parades, free speech events, residential block parties. The free speech events were included with the two thousand sixteen amendments at the request of Chief Conley. The sponsors pay a fee because reviewing the applications is time-consuming, as John could tell you. Every department, like a liquor license, reviews special event applications. The policy allows the city to impose restrictions on events. Now, most events involve or include the service of alcohol. Through Chapter three of our ordinances, we can impose limits, restrictions, security plans. However, in the last two years or so, we've had special events that have not involved liquor and we have no way of imposing security or limitations or restrictions on those events. And some of those events have been, have had problems arise. Fighting, overcrowding, pushing and shoving in confined spaces. Some of those problems have occurred across the street at Lincoln Square. We've had liquor, you know, out, events where there have been large crowds where liquor has been sold and we've had problems with those events. And in those cases, we are in a purely reactive mode. Fire for overcrowding, police for fighting. There's even been some weapons displayed in some of these events. Gunshots have been fired. Property damage has occurred. And yet, the city is in a reactive mode. This pol, this ordinance, which replaces the policy, one of its goals is to address the issue of allowing the city to be more proactive on all kinds of events. The ordinance will allow the shutdown of events. Now, police have, have the power to do that already, but this confers them specific authority to do that. The policy also charged special event promoters or sponsors a fee for using city property, whether it's cones or whether it's police directing traffic or whether it's fire providing their services, what have you. Public Works, at least three departments provide services. And for example, the marathon pays a pretty hefty fee to the city for the services to allow the marathon to run. So why do you say convert the policy trimmed down to an ordinance? The reason is, is we can't enforce a lot of the provisions on the policy except internally among the staff. Staff doesn't apply for special event permits. Staff doesn't get involved in policing the events in advance. All the staff can do is take a special event application, look at what city resources are being requested, and the policy anyway allows the city to allocate and use those resources as it sees fit. The ordinance expands that. It, ordinance also basically puts it on our books. So special event promoters and those who deal with special events know in advance what's involved with putting up or putting on their special events. We've eliminated free spent, free speech events from the ordinance because that has always been my concern because that raises constitutional free speech First Amendment issues. We've not had, at least in my tenure here, which is almost five years now, any problems with free speech events. Parades are adequately covered. They had been covered in the policy all along, but they have adequately covered in Chapter twenty-three of our ordinances, starting at Section one ten. Residential block parties really haven't presented much of a problem. At most, they generally request what, some horses or cones?
Public barricades.
Barricades from Public Works, but they've not gotten out of hand. It's the larger events. Now, one thing we've added that is not in the policy, but we've added to the ordinance are events that are on private property. But we create an exception for those unless those events have experienced problems within a twelve-month period before they ask or before they want to put on another event. It could be a fraternity where it gets out of hand and they spill out on the street and there's fighting, or weapons play or what have you. It could be an event at Lincoln Square which doesn't involve alcohol. Could be a concert that gets in the high, high court area which gets out of hand. And we've had a number of those that happened to involve liquor, but we've had a number of those events in the last year and a half, which is, which have gotten out of hand and required police presence there as well as fire. So we feel, and this has been, this ordinance has been circulating through staff and in the development processes, I say, for almost a year, and all departments have had input on it and significant changes from when it was first drafted. And for your sake, the original draft was twenty-two pages. It's down now to what, five or six? Seven? So on behalf of legal and on behalf of the city departments, we request you move this onto council with a recommendation to approve. John can tell you more about how we process special event applications, how Public Works gets involved with special events. As I say, up to this point, the police department has developed security plans for special events involving liquor, whether it's at a bar or Sweet Corn Festival or what have you. Fire has been primarily involved with occupancy levels and dealing with ingress and egress in terms of numbers of people and adhering to the occupancy limits of confined spaces.
All right. Thank you. Questions? Dennis?
Yeah, well, thanks. For the most part, I totally understand your interest in trying to define exactly what the city's responsibilities can be legally. Maybe my question really has to do with when an event has minimal impact on city requirements, and I'm thinking of the block parties in particular. As John was saying, yes, they often require or request barricades and so that's a supply made from the city. So is that simple request then initiate the process of requiring them to file a, an application for a permit forty-five days before the block party and for the other legal aspects of this process to be initiated, including fees?
Block parties are not covered in the proposed ordinance.
So is that specifically said that they're not, they're eliminated?
It's not within the definition of a special event. We will continue to work with residents who want to have block parties. In fact, I think an application was just circulated today and John can fill you in on more details about that.
We've processed block party applications in as fast as just a couple of days.
Well, and that's what I was wondering because they don't seem to, I mean, a lot of times people haven't planned forty-five days ahead of time to have a block party. It's more of a spontaneous neighborhood decision sometimes.
The forty-five day provision here wouldn't apply. In fact, the ordinance doesn't apply. We've had no problems with block parties.
Okay.
They ask for a barricade or two and Public Works very gladly provides them. There are requirements that they obtain consent of a certain number of contiguous property owners to the block party, but I would say that's probably the biggest hurdle, John?
Yeah, the, the biggest requirement for any block party is that seventy, they get a resident petition sheet that they have to fill out and it requires that seventy-five percent of the residents that would be affected by that block party sign that resident petition.
All right. So I was reading the exceptions, but I didn't see that block parties were, were specifically mentioned. It says funeral processions, elected constitutional officers of the state, certain units of government, events hosted by the city, things that are conducted at the civic center, but I didn't see block parties. Am I missing something?
I think it's.
Because on the first page background, it does say that.
Right.
Parties are included.
I think, well, block parties are supposed to be excluded and we can put that in as an exception if the city council, you know, would like that. I have no problem with that.
I think that's an important thing.
No. We don't, we don't have a problem.
Says the latest iteration of the policy applies to special events, parades, free speech events and residential block parties.
That's the policy, not the ordinance. That's, that's what's in existence right now.
All right.
And, and we trimmed that down for the ordinance.
Okay. Well, thanks for that. That's an important distinction.
Yes.
Thank you. All right.
I wasn't sure whether you were, when you were talking about it, you were referring to the policy or the proposed ordinance.
Okay, thanks.
Eric?
So, two questions. The policy's application to free speech events will persist or will that be superseded?
We will be rewriting the policy and tailoring it to what city's staff does. I believe we will eliminate, considering a spe, a free speech event as a, an event requiring a permit. Municipalities can require permits, get charged for them generally unless there are city's resources that they've asked for. But I have, I have a problem with any form of regulation of a free speech event.
Well, okay, if I can follow up. I, I also have a problem with regulation of free speech. On the other hand, I wonder if somebody calls something a free speech event, then they're exempt from this, the oversight embodied in this ordinance or in any oversight embodied in our policy. Is that correct?
No, because it's the nature of the event now. If they want to try and slide it through, very likely, as we have caught a lot of events, not free speech events, but we've caught a lot of events where there have been no permit applications, where we've caught them. They show up on Facebook. There are people in the city that do Monister Facebook pages. If it happens to slip through, you're correct. If there's liquor going to be sold, then our liquor ordinance requires that they get a temporary license. I mean, if you want to have a free speech event and then pass around the liquor and call it a free speech event, somebody's going to get a notice to appear or wherever the liquor comes from, a liquor license violation because there's an ordinance which requires a temporary liquor license for an event, any event that, where they're serving liquor.
Well, I guess, I guess what I'm really concerned about is there are, is, is there are people who say that they're for free speech, but that's not what they're about. And I, I guess I'm wondering whether, I, I'm not in favor of regulating speech, but are there other aspects of an event that would call itself a free speech event that might appropriately be subject to city policy or city ordinance?
Most of the free speech, most of the events involving free speech that I'm aware of, though it's changing as we all know, given what's been happening lately, often our reactions or responses to some other activity, typically political type activity. And so they tend to be more spontaneous and people appear in front of the courthouse or on the sidewalk. I, I'm not quite sure how you would delineate the difference between a free speech event and a special event. If I want to set up a stage in the middle of Main Street, I don't want to serve alcohol. And if I happen to have a rock and roll band, let's say, or a folk band that sings protest songs, that's my genre, protest songs. And I want to get up there and I want to have the pyrotechnics and I want to rope it off and I want to, you know, have my band play the protest songs. Is that a special event or is that a free speech event? When do you cross the line? And then the next line is, okay, half my repertoire are protest songs and the other half are rock and roll, just regular old rock and roll songs. Is that a free speech event or is that a special event? And you keep cutting back to maybe it's only one song and it's the last song. Where do we go from there? It's, you know, almost impossible when people are speaking or singing or demonstrating with actions, you know, physical actions or signs, is something a free speech event? I'm a rock and roll group and I don't sing any protest song, but fifteen people show up with signs to protest because it's a gathering. Has that special event been converted to a free speech event?
Well, and, and I'm really not concerned about either symbolic or actual or musical speech. I'm concerned about actions that are designed frankly to intimidate, which we have seen. And how do we, how do we draw a line on, on that sort of, that sort of behavior?
It, it depends on what the speech is. Certain kinds of speech may not be protected. Speech which incites violence is not protected. Now, whether somebody chooses to enforce a, a non-protected speech, somebody who says something offensive politically or whatever, what was it Patrick Henry once said, "I may not agree with what you say, but I'll defend your right to say it." What we're dealing with here are what we think are and believe are special events. They are usually commercial events, often raising money, or it may be an event at a fraternity party, though the event itself is, there's no requirement until they cross the line where city resources, which could include police, are called to quell a serious problem. Remember, it's a problem that threatens human life, health, safety or property. You know, when they have one of those kinds of situations, the next time they want to have it, if they have it within the next twelve months, that private property owner, the fraternity, is going to have to apply for a special event. And they're put, put on notice because our ordinance, as opposed to a policy buried in a policy and procedure manual says so. But I, but the issue I'm. But I, but the issue I'm struggling with is, when is something, when does the line, what is the bright line test that the city can use in terms of what constitutes a free speech event versus what constitutes a special event? And I don't think there is a bright line test. I think there has to be some discretion, and we're not going to catch every violator.
If I may ask, just to proceed one more point.
Sure.
You, you mentioned, there's a place where you mentioned that previous events, one of the problems has actually been gunfire.
Yes.
But there is no mention, there is no subsequent mention in the document of guns or firearms or anything. I mean, are we, do we have any right, in a special event, to prohibit guns?
Well, we, we obviously have, we are now, and we were the last to adopt a concealed carry. I'm not, yeah, if it's at the Lincoln Square Mall inside, I believe they have a no guns policy. Civic Center has a no guns policy. But if you're in the middle of Main Street at a, a true, what we all would call a special event, Sweet Corn, I ventured a bet, and probably Sylvia could answer this better than I could, but I ventured a bet there were people who were concealing and carrying, if that's the proper expression, at Sweet Corn. I'm not sure we can control that kind of thing.
At Sweet Corn, we did have signs at the entrances that no firearms allowed.
Okay, well, can we, can we-
If we, if we are allowed-
Can we make that a provision in, in granting permits for special events?
I, I would be happy to include that kind of a provision if that's what the council wants, but I'd like to do a little research on that.
Okay.
I believe, I believe that's part of state law. I don't know for sure, but I believe that is, that, that during special events, unless you live within that contained special event area and you were going from your house to your vehicle, or your house to another location, you could do that. But if you're there participating or being any part of that event, you cannot carry a firearm.
I'd have to check the statute, and if the statute provides for that, then the statute is basically read into this and any other policy.
Yeah, I, I guess I'd like to, you know, both as a matter of keeping people safe, I'd like us to have the ability to do that.
I'd be happy to look at it.
But it also strikes me that if we have the ability to do that, and we don't do it, and somebody gets shot, maybe we, we could have some legal liability.
I'm not sure we would have any legal liability because we didn't facilitate the conduct, the shooting conduct. However, the, our, our goal in the city is to protect health, life, safety, and property. And if there's a way we can, if the council wants it, if there's a way we can include a provision that the sponsors must provide a means. Now, the way to, other than signs, the way, the only way I can think of to provide a means is to have at the entrances of all special events, Sweet Corn, for example, metal detectors or pat down or wands. And I, I don't know whether event promoters are going to want, I'm, I'm talking about the practical reality as opposed to the philosophy.
Yeah, I, I, and I, I, it may be that all we can do is, is provide signs or give notice that at these events firearms are not to be carried, and then trust that the law of hiding gun owners will obey, will obey the rules.
I would hope so, and I will be happy to check into that. I'll look at the statute and then see if there's anything beyond that in terms of case law.
All right, Dean, you had a question?
Mr. Collins is right that the statute for concealed carry does specifically outlaw the carrying of concealed firearms at any event that requires a special permit issued by any entity at all, whether it be a city or a township or whatever. That being said, there are lots of guns being carried at special events, and they are not by concealed carry permit holders or not the people that you need to worry about. It's happening a lot, but it's, very few of them are concealed carry permit holders. I'm sure there's a few.
I would imagine there are some who do.
But he's right, it is already a violation of the Concealed Carry Act. No, thank you.
All right. Bill?
Okay, so to make sure I understand the stuff about the free speech events, that was in the old policy, and we're rewriting it to be framed first by this ordinance that would have no mention of free speech policy. We're just going to concentrate on the behavior of the people at the event and not try to determine whether it's a free speech event or some other kind of event. Is that right?
I'm not quite sure I understand your question.
Okay, the old policy used to define, it had some definition or made reference to free speech events?
Yes.
And the new ordinance doesn't, and doesn't, we don't plan to. So we don't, we aren't going to try to define what a free speech event is?
In the ordinance, no. And when we delete, if we delete the free speech issues in the policy, we'll delete them. It, I spent hours for the policy at Chief Conley's request, hours trying to define, and the old policy had some, some help, but it didn't have anything specific, free speech. Trying to define a free speech event, and as Alder Person Jacobson raised the issue, trying to define a delineation or a bright line test between when does a free speech event become a special event? If two weeks from today I announce I am having a, speakers on the courthouse steps, and I invite all forty-two thousand of my closest friends in Urbana to attend and hear these speakers, and they're going to be on a range of political topics, that's a free speech event, but somebody could call it a special event.
Yeah, I, I just assume not try to define free speech event.
That's the other reason I want to get away from trying to regulate free speech events. Anytime you get into regulating free speech events, you get into issues of, have you gone too far or not? There are reasonable regulations that can be placed on free speech events, but every time there's a case on it, it turns on the, you know, it starts out with a, you know, First Amendment analysis, but the application of that analysis from Supreme Court decision to Supreme Court decision, they apply as the analysis has been refined over the years in whatever direction the court takes it. But then it ultimately, when the trial courts have to apply those decisions, it's based on the facts. And every case has its own twists and turns.
So then, the only time some, somebody has to apply for a special event permit is if they think that there might be city resources involved, like-
Or if the-
Or if the city decides there might be-
Basically, that's, that's basically.
But if they, if they don't think there's going to be city resources involved, and they don't apply, then the city may never know until the event happens.
They, that's a possibility.
And then that's where the thing kicks in, where they don't, there was a special rule about that.
If, if something comes up during that event where city resources are deployed and used to protect human life, health, safety, and property, the next time they think about having, they will receive a letter saying, you should have, essentially, you should have applied for a special event, you are now required to if you're going to have a similar type of event within the next twelve months. We're not going to catch them all, just like we don't catch all the speeders and the other traffic violators, or the jaywalkers, or the drug dealers.
I think in the past, there's been some concern from a couple of people I've talked to, that we're holding relatively small events, like March of Dimes, march to, you know, carrying a few signs to raise awareness about something, that they notified the city they were going to do that, and then they were required to get a special event permit. Now, we would look at it and say, well, we don't need to block any streets, we don't need to put up any barricades, probably don't need any special police protection, so there's really no reason to issue any special event.
Using your hypothetical, if the March of Dimes holds a small event, uh-
They stay on sidewalks.
Let's say, let's say, small event in the IMC or the Lincoln Square inside, that's private property, and there are no city resources likely to be needed, and city does not allow, assuming they were to approach the city and say, we're thinking of having this event, we don't need anything from you, but we just want to let you know. We would probably say, we would say, no city resources, no permit required.
Okay, and then, um-
Even beyond the city resources, if city property or city right of way is used beyond its normal intent, also requires a special event permit.
Right, but that's, yeah, I define that as, that's a city resource, public right of ways are city resource. If somebody wants to have an event and block off only half of Main Street, you know, the South Lane of Main Street, that's a, even though maybe no other resources are required because they're going to provide their own security and their own barricades and all, that would require a permit, because that's a city resource. But if they're having it on private property, no.
We do have, we do have some longstanding events that it, it is a simple march from one location to the other, they're going to be on the sidewalk, they're going to follow all traffic laws. They've, they've been informed that no longer is a, a special event permit route required. They don't need an insurance certificate, and they don't really need to let us know, but they take it upon themselves to go ahead and fill one out, to let us know this is what we are going to be doing. They know I do notify the mayor's office, the police department, Public Works, the fire department, community development. And it's, it's just a way to pass on some information, relatively easy to city officials.
And, and we have, the city has experience with these individual, or these organizations, and they've not presented any problem whatsoever.
So when it comes to carrying fire, so if somebody wants to carry torches in their event, would that be regulated by our policy, or would that be regulated by our pyrotechnics?
I, I, would that be regulated by-
I think there's also a pyrotechnics permit that we issue.
I, I think that would be regulated by the, if it's a free speech event, no. If it's a special event, then-
No, we just said we weren't defining for free speech events, so how do you know if it's a free speech event?
Well, you know, we, I, if we have a free speech event and we don't regulate it, we may not know that it suddenly appears on our streets. But if there's a special event where, that involves carrying, you know, as you say, torches, that may present a threat to human life, health, and safety, and the fire department would probably be involved with that. That's a city resource.
And is that going to be a question on the permit?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that would be vetted through?
That would be a question, do you intend to use any kind of open flame?
That is something we are adding to the ever permit.
Yeah.
It's not on there yet, but will be added.
In fact, Mayor Marlin raised that very issue, and, you know, at her request, that's going to be included. Any kind of pyrotechnics or open flame.
Actually, that was thanks to Councilmember Wu's request, and the, representing several constituents, so.
Okay, thanks.
All right, other questions? Aaron?
So you, you mentioned, like, the IMC, or, and you mentioned Lincoln Square, and that parties that were held, private individuals were using those spaces, then they would not require a special permit. But it sounds like you said unless there's been some prior issue with that space.
Yes.
So is that relationship to the space itself, or the person who wants to do the party or the event?
It would be both. Obviously, the IMC, let's use that as an example, the, as I understand it, the IMC leases out space to a sponsor. And then the sponsor, and let's assume there's no alcohol. And in fact, we've had some problems with the IMC, and now they are cooperating with us. But there have been problems where there's no alcohol, where fights have broken out, and it spilled out onto the sidewalk in front of the IMC. As we understand it, those were sponsored, the IMC leased the space, but there was a sponsor for the events. And one of the problems with that situation was there was nobody from the IMC at the event, as we understand it, because they just leased the space. And the people hosting the event did not provide supervision of the event, and it, and a couple of them got out of hand. So now that sponsor, in cooperation with the IMC, are going to have to apply for a special event permit for a similar type of event. Let's say it's a senior graduation party, high school graduation party that's sponsored there, and the IMC's part of it, no alcohol, and fights break out in, in the space and spill out onto the street, and police are called. Well, the next time they want to have a high school party like that, they, within a twelve month period, they would be required under this ordinance to obtain a special event permit.
So if I'm understanding this correctly, you're telling me that anytime a fight breaks out at any event, that the police have to go to, that whoever had that event, if they want to have one again, they have to have a special permit used from the city of Urbana?
Yes, and the reason is, is so, certain restrictions or limitations or a security plan, so that doesn't happen again, can be provided. It could be very much like many of the bars that have events, where they hire their own security.
So if there's a house party next door to me, and there's twenty people there, and a fight breaks out outside, and the police are called, the next time they want to have a house party, they got to have a special permit?
Probably not, but, you know, it depends.
I mean, that's what you just said, though, right?
It, it depends, it, you know, you, you can create a hypothetical to get around this ordinance, or any other ordinance in the city, as much, anytime one wants, you know. Was the fight a threat to human life, health, safety, or property?
Yeah, if you're getting in a fight, I think it's-
If it spills out, yeah, it, it, it could require a special event. It could be, let's say Jimmy John, who has two hundred of his best friends over to his mansion, if he had one in Urbana, and the thing blew up into a huge fight, somebody gets injured, probably Jimmy John's would have to get a special event permit if he's going to host a party like that, that same kind of party.
You know, I, I think the police department is also going to take some discretion in that. If there's, your neighbor has twenty people over to watch the Super Bowl, and two of those twenty get into a fight out in the front yard, the police department's going to take a look at it, and a couple of guys are gathered up to go to somebody's house to watch a football game, and they had a disagreement, as compared to three of your neighbors getting together to put up a large screen in the backyard and invite two hundred of their nearest friends. If, if that continues to be a trend, then a, a special event permit more than likely will be required.
So, I'm just trying to make sure I'm wrapping my head around this, because to me, it sounds like this ordinance is designed to address the concerns at Lincoln Square and the IMC, as opposed to anyplace else in the city.
No.
Well, I'm just saying, this is how I'm, I'm hearing this. Maybe I'm absolutely wrong, I appreciate your Jimmy John's analogy, but I think you and I both know that's not going to be the case. If Jimmy John's has as many parties as he wants, all kind of stuff can go on there, there's not going to be any special event requirements necessary for him to have a party. Okay? So this situation is really about the issues and concerns that we have that were related to Lincoln Square, when somebody lost their legal license, as well as the IMC, primarily those types of issues. So I'm just trying to make sure I'm wrapping my head around this, and I can appreciate the attempt to address these particular concerns, but to do so, that's going to put forth an ordinance that has such far-reaching implications is a concern for me. Because the only requirement, which I understand from the legalese of the city, is if it violates some health, safety, or human life type of thing, there's so many different things that could take place in someone's home, or some sort of event, at a children's birthday party that could violate that, that particular aspect of this ordinance. And I don't want to be ridiculous, but if the language is in the ordinance, then it can be used in that way. And I do think it's far-reaching to say that someone who has a party at any space, whether it's the Civic Center or the Lincoln Square, and they want to have a party, and two people get out of, or three or four people get unruly and do all, do whatever they do, I don't know how that's the responsibility of the lease, the leasing agency. I think there's some culpability and responsibility for them to choose wisely who they lease to and stuff like that, but this, this appears to be a provision that's, that's a little far-reaching for me. So I'm just having some concerns with it.
All right, other questions? All right, I have a couple.
Okay.
So I'll ask the easy one first. This covers more than events that serve alcohol, correct?
Yes.
Okay, why is it a requirement they have to be twenty-one years or older in order to apply?
So there's some legal responsibility. If a fifteen-year-old wants to have a special event-
I'm just thinking eighteen.
Hmm?
I'm thinking eighteen instead of twenty-one.
Because most of the events usually do involve alcohol.
Okay, I'm just thinking that sometimes there are- Okay, I'm just thinking that sometimes there are very good university students who aren't quite 21, who might want to have a special event, organize something. Is there a way to amend this so that if it's an event that is selling or serving alcohol, that you have to be 21? But if you're not?
Absolutely, what, as I say, this is, what goes into this is a policy decision. And of course, we can, if it's, let's say, a non-alcoholic event, we can lower it to 18.
Right, exactly. That's what I'm proposing. Okay, and then, and I, and I'm sorry if I'm beating a dead horse here. I just want to be very clear. If an event, regardless of somebody would, would stipulate that it's a free speech event, if any event requires city resources, this applies. Is that correct or incorrect?
I'm not sure if I understand. Are you suggesting or saying if it's a free speech event?
No, I'm saying if an event, any event, requires city resources and somebody may think it's a free speech event, do they still require to fill out a special permit? So that's, it's regardless if it's a free speech event, if you have city resources, you have to fill this out.
Not if it's a free speech event. Here's the problem, we don't know, yeah, most.
No, I, I mean, I, I understand that and I, and I don't mean to interrupt. I just, I think that there was some confusion. Bill was asking for some clarification and I was going down that road myself. So, so anybody can declare this is a free speech event, and I'll give an example. So the Women's March, right, okay, the Women's March took place at, at West Side Park.
I was there.
Shut down, I was too, some of the roads, they had, they had volunteers, they didn't have city people like steering people. So that required city resources to shut down those roads.
But that, that march, if it was in Urbana?
If it was in Urbana.
Would not require a permit.
It would not?
It's a free speech event, even though it involves city resources.
So we have nothing that regulates free speech events?
Other than the policy. And there's a question, as I said, about regulating free speech events. I, I mean, it's when they get out of hand, it's when they get out of hand.
Sure.
Is, the cities react. But there are lots of cases involving pre-event regulation. Some of them have said, that's okay. Similar cases have said, no, that's not okay. It's a constitutional violation.
Okay, so, all right, so I'm clear. I, I understand that this has nothing to do with block parties. This has nothing to do with anybody who declares it is a free speech event, even if it is something that is spontaneous, that happens overnight, they, you know, organize or something that's been planned for months, doesn't matter. If they call it a free speech event, the city has no say into what they can and cannot do. Is that correct, based on this ordinance?
I would say if it's a, what you're saying is you're trying to create hypotheticals of splitting hairs and what, back to what we were talking about with Bill, what's a free speech event and with Eric, what is a free speech event? You can call anything a free speech event.
Right, and that's why I'm saying if we had the rule that if you require city resources, then you have to go through this process, and we don't care if you call it a free speech event or not, then that, that kind of solves the problem because we're, we're using city resources to assist in an event. So that, then we don't have to define free speech events.
If the council is willing to run the constitutional risk, maybe the answer is a, a splitting of the differences. And now we're going to get into practical realities. If you organize a free speech event, more than X number of days before the event, at least you shall notify the city of the event. Does that put a chill on the event? I can't tell you that, only a court can tell you that. Is that a chill on free speech? Some people would clearly say yes, others would say no, it's reasonable, the city should know. So in case of a problem, they know that they might have to address that problem. But again, is that a chill on free speech? We're getting into very esoteric constitutional analyses for which you can always create a hypothetical where you think you've gotten around that issue. And in some jurisdictions you might, in others you may not.
It's a case-by-case basis.
It is the preference of the public works department and I believe the police department that even if somebody is calling something a free speech event, is that the city requires some sort of notification of that event? Possibly in the process of filling out a special event permit? Maybe the city foregoing the approval or disapproval portion of that event permit? But at least the city is notified at some point of what somebody is planning.
And the problem.
Unfortunately, that's, that's some of the issue where Jim's trying to, to get across.
So if, if an event happens tonight somewhere in the country and 5,000 people tomorrow, through Facebook and other social media say, we need to gather and protest this, whatever that event is, protest this, we'll meet you at nine o'clock on the courthouse steps. Should they have a free speech permit or an event permit? I mean, ideally it puts the city on notice. Okay, let's say we say no. There's no way they could get that to us and process, we could process. Okay, what about a full day notice, 24-hour notice, about 48 hours? I mean, again, we're drawing distinctions based on hours. Now, we wouldn't, we, you know, even the policy didn't charge a fee for a free speech event unless they asked to use city resources, other than we're just going to meet on the courthouse steps, where we have to deploy, they ask, you know, for barriers and maybe police protection or what have you and all. But again, you're getting into, we, we can draw boundaries. But then what happens when somebody comes within a boundary? I didn't need a permit, I was eight seconds, I got my, I waited eight seconds. So I didn't bother to get a permit. I mean, we get, I mean, if there are people who want to game the system, no matter what we set up, they're going to game the system. And then we deal with the fallout and hope there is none.
Dennis?
Boy, the longer we talk, the worse it gets. Something that seemed rather clear about 15, 20 minutes ago has now been, because we keep talking about what if and what, and let's make the assumption of, and really, we're not concerned about hypotheticals, although you, we've brought them up over and over again. Is it more important that this ordinance is being drafted so that if there is an infraction, the city can then address it legally? And if, so we maybe are not so concerned about, about the event that's, that's being created, but how the city responds to the results of the event? And if we're responding to results rather than the promotion dialogue of what this event, event is going to be, it's more like something that the police department would use as a tool to regulate activity for the safety of the community rather than to presuppose what might happen at an event. And I think that we're on more solid ground if we can use an ordinance, this, if this ordinance is, the purpose of this is to step in when disharmony or lack of control is evidenced, to say that, well, okay, we have an ordinance here that regulates appropriate activity and now this has gone beyond what's appropriate, so we, you know, maybe there's a fee involved, maybe now there's a legal basis for stepping in to control the situation in some way. I guess that would be, maybe we don't even need that ordinance drafted by, as a city, a city civil regulation because it's probably regulated by police protection policy.
The police certainly, whenever a serious problem or a problem arises at an event, will step in if, if they're alerted, you know, 911 call or whatever, they're alerted. The, one of the main goals of the ordinance, as has been the policy, is for the city to be put on notice that there is going to be a gathering of people. Otherwise, why bother give Sweet Corn a permit? Why bother give the marathon a permit? Why bother giving any event a permit? When, when a problem arises, police will deploy.
Well, we have these permits so that we can regulate the fact that there's going to be trash bins to us, you know, to clean the streets or we're going to have some direction about traffic control. I mean, there's a lot of reasons why we'd like to permit an event. I mean, this whole, like, whole conversation about free speech just muddles the need for the city's clarity to know how to stage events so that they accommodate public good. I mean, I don't, you know, that's, I, I think we should stop talking about free speech and just accommodate the public good.
Diane?
I thought I understood this policy until we started talking about it. I thought the purpose of the special events policy was to clarify what the responsibilities of the public was and what the responsibility of the city was. And if someone is planning a gathering for 2,000 people in Carl Park and they want to march to downtown Urbana, I would expect they would get a permit for that because it would mean, it would have a substantial impact on the city. Or, so is that not what this applies to?
Right now, that's not there. That's not to say we can't put it in, what I'm cautioning the council is when you regulate speech.
Oh, it's not regulating speech, it's, it's preparing for the event.
If the 50 people who want to march on the courthouse have to get a permit as opposed to the 2,000 going from Carl Park to the courthouse, let's say, if the 50 people want to march and they want to do it tomorrow because of an event that happened, let's say, this morning, are they going to be required, and they're going to march from Carl Park to the courthouse?
Are they required now? Do they get a permit now?
Under the policy, they would be required because.
Under the current policy?
Under the current policy because they're using city resources. They're using the sidewalk to march and they may be using one of the lanes of traffic to march. And all.
And, and under, under the direction that I have right now from the old policy, somebody gives me, gives me a call in the afternoon, we want to march from location A to location B. We want to use the street, we want to do this, we want to do that. Okay, it's a somewhat of a free speech. They're, they're organizing against something or organizing for something.
Sure.
But they want to use city resources. I will let them know I need a special event permit filled out. I will not tell them it is either approved or denied. We will let it happen. We don't require the insurance certificate because it's a demonstration.
And they couldn't get it in time anyway.
I think Jim's biggest issue that, that he's wanting, wanting to get across here, and you can tell me if I'm not correct, is the need to not define what a free speech event is in any detail. Because that's where you're going to get the argument with anybody.
We could still ask them to fill out the permit and then it gets routed the way it always gets routed.
That is, that is the preference of the public works department and I believe the police department.
And if the council agrees with that, I have no problem with that.
Okay, so we're back, so we're back to where we started, basically, I think.
Forty-five minutes later.
No, I think we are, I think we're back.
The biggest, the biggest thing with this ordinance, and it doesn't matter whether it's Lincoln Square or the IMC building, or the next venue, or the venue after that, or the venue after that, is, is being able to regulate some of these special events that happen on private property that continue to be problems.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Dean, did you have a question?
Well, this has got to be one of the craziest conversations I've heard. I'm going to put it in my top 10 crazy city council conversations when I leave. I don't think we've even been having the same conversation some of the times here. It's been interesting. It's been a long time since I've been to college. In fact, I went to get my transcripts the other day and my college had closed. Tells you how old I am, so. But here's my question, does the government not have the right to name the time and place of any free speech demonstrations?
It does not.
Did they not used to have the time or the right to?
I don't know whether they used to. If I want to demonstrate at midnight with my 5,000 closest friends over an issue, as long as it's quote peaceful, I can do it.
I would have swore they had the ti, through, through case law, that they had the, the right to tick the, pick the time and the venue of the, and, and the reason I ask that is because if that's true, then you would have to apply to, so we would know. You'd have to apply for some type of permit.
I'll be honest, I've never seen a case.
But that was 20 years ago.
Where a municipality can say you don't have the right to exercise your free speech right from 2:00 AM in the morning till.
On a moment's notice.
Well, on a moment's notice, but 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM in the morning.
Chief, was that not your impression of the law? Okay, well, that's probably why they closed my college.
What?
That's probably why they closed my college. That's what we were taught, I remember that. I can't even send in a grievance on that because they're no longer there.
You know, fortunately or unfortunately, whichever way you want to look at it, there could be circumstances that arise that at 2:00 in the morning, a large group of some community organization decides that they want to protest in front of the county courthouse. Are they going to wake me up at, at 1:45 to try and fill out a special event permit? Probably not. But they're going to show up, they're going to do their free speech and hopefully it stays peaceful. Hopefully, the police department is staffed or can be staffed enough in case the situation goes awry. There's going to be a lot of circumstances involved in free speech events that we can't control.
Eric, you've been very patient, thank you.
Yeah. So I, I kind of agree with others about, with the frustration about getting bogged down in free speech. And I understand, the ordinance does not mention free speech. And that's as it should be. It, it certainly is not true that we can, in an arbitrary way, tell people when and where they can gather. That was demonstrated in Charlottesville because the city actually refused to give a permit for the place where the white supremacists and the Klan eventually did gather. Because a judge said, no, you have to let them gather there.
Right.
So, but, but I, I, I think in a completely even-handed way, whatever people call their gathering, if they are going to utilize public resources, if they're going to need to utilize the streets and the sidewalks in a way that requires, you know, or indicates the need for public services, that they absolutely should notify the city of that. I don't think that's a, that's not an onerous requirement and, and they should request a, a permit to do so. And I think we can write that without, without any reference to, to free speech. I think, I think, I think the free speech right is implicit in all of our ordinances because it is explicit in our constitution.
Aaron?
So just a couple of things. One, I would say that along the lines of spontaneous, at the spur of the moment, at the spur of the moment, whether it's the quote-unquote Muslim ban that was promoted or pushed forward by the current president and there was a, a gathering, a less than 24-hour response that was at the Willard Airport, that would have, based upon what you were describing, would have required a permit and would not have been able to take place, which I do see some people saying that would be a chilling of their free speech ability. I do not support a ordinance that would say that someone who wants to do something like that has to have a permit, a 48-hour notice or whatever. I would not support something like that. The second thing is, it was said earlier in relationship to the conceal and carry stuff. And I'm very sensitive to some of these statements that are being made because the statement is that the ones who have the legal ability to carry are not the ones that you need to worry about. And in fact, some of the most heinous crimes in our country's history were created by people who were legal card-carrying members. So I want to make sure that we don't put out in the public that there's good guys and bad guys as it relates to people who. and bad guys as it relates to people who carry guns. I have a problem with that sort of notion being put forth from the council. Let's just be fair and impartial about that type of thing. And I'm going to motion that we keep this in committee for further discussion.
I'd second that.
Motion by Aaron, second by Dennis.
You don't need a vote, a motion to defer to the next committee, all you need is a motion and a second.
Oh, thank you. Okay, well, that stays in committee. It's deferred. All right.
So, so, our direction is to resolve all of these thorny issues and write something perfect, please.
Well, if, if somebody else has a different definition than the US Supreme Court on regulating free speech...
No, we're not regulating free speech!
Well, that's the point.
That's off the table!
Well, but, the question is, is regulation versus chilling.
I'm not a chair. Charlie.
Jim, our deferral rule doesn't refer to keeping stuff in committee or anything. Our deferral rule doesn't talk about keeping stuff in committee, that's a special rule only applies at council meetings.
Okay.
So...
You think they should vote?
They should vote on keeping this in committee, yes.
Voice vote, yes.
Yes.
All right.
I don't have the rules in front of me.
We are voting on ordinance number 2017-08049, ordinance amending Urbana City Code Chapters 1 and 14, regulating special events in legal. The motion by Aaron Amen, seconded by Dennis, is to keep this in committee. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion carries. All right, the last resolution of the night, resolution number 2017-080058R, a resolution approving Urbana and Community Forestry Grant Program Agreements, Public Works.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is definitively about free tree planting.[879.32][879.32](laughter)
Not exciting.
So, this resolution would allow us to enter into an agreement with Morton Arboretum to follow certain specifications for us to plant trees under this grant program, and so, Public Works staff certainly recommends that the committee pass this on to council for approval. But the Public Works Director also wanted me to give you a little background, real brief, on how EAB has affected us, and how the grant will help, and how we've actually reached out to the private sector in our attempt to help them deal with EAB. The grant program, 29 Illinois communities were awarded the grant, 13 Northern Illinois communities, 16 Southern Illinois communities, and a little side note, we helped the village of Sidoris with some counseling on their grant application, and they, they were also awarded a grant. Ash trees in Urbana. In 1997, we had about 733 ash trees. We decided at that time we wanted to reduce our population, like we did with a number of other different species, so we stopped planting ash trees in 1997, although we had no idea what was coming down the pipeline. Because of that, and with our removals, we had reduced our population 128 trees in about 13 years, or 11 years. In 2008, we were well aware of EAB. EAB was discovered in the nation in 2002. We started to double in our removals of ash trees and proactively begin to remove those trees, so we could start to reduce the population while we had time to, while they were alive, and so we wouldn't have to ask for additional funds, we could absorb that within our budget of removal funds. By 2013, we had about 500 ash trees remaining, and that's when we discovered EAB in our community, and we really started focusing on removals at that point, so much so that we dropped clearance pruning, regular tree maintenance, visibility triangle, and a lot of our other responsibilities in forestry, so we could solely focus on removals. And the team did a fabulous job, in four years, we removed 406 trees, so that put us basically right now around 90 ash trees remaining, due to the sweat equity that was put in by our staff. Of those 90 trees, 42 are being treated, and we have 48 standing ash trees that are untreated. Of the 42 treated trees, about half of them, 22 trees are being treated by residents and 20 by the city. So, what's this mean with our total population? Well, we've always used a baseline, because of the data that we've had, historic data of our trees in our community, of 17,000 trees. That was the number that was extrapolated from some of the inventories that we had back in the 19, early 1930s, '32, I think, that basically was before Dutch elm disease. Once the Dutch elm disease came through town, we lost about half of those. Our next, more modern inventory in 1982 put us at about 10,000 trees. So, we were building up with the population at that point, and that was six years after the beginning of our forestry program. And we had about 35% of the city parkways were vacant, so 35% tree planting sites that were available. In 95, we were doing pretty good, in the 80s and the 90s, we were planting somewhere around 100 trees above and beyond the trees that we were removing. So, we were averaging around 50 to 100 trees in removals, and we were planting around 150 to 200 trees, and that started to bump our population up. In fact, we were sitting at about 25% in vacant sites at that point. 2013, EAB starts peaking in our community, and our numbers start to go back down, and where we are right now is close to where we were in the 80s. So, how do we reverse this decline? Let's just throw some numbers out to show you what we have to do. We've got 464 stumps. We have, on top of that, 171 trees listed as removals. That gives us 635 tree sites that we have vacant that we need to fill. If we add that to the 100 trees that we, on average, remove every year, and we try to get this into a doable package, we think we can plant 125 additional trees, so it's 225 trees a year, if we size our trees down to smaller trees, and, and get rid of the backlog, make up the backlog in about a five-year timeframe is our plan. And then the grant comes available. So, we have 15,000 federal dollars, and what that will do for us is, is afford us about 282 new trees, and reduce this backlog to about three years. And why this is important is, we want to get the backlog back, to get our urban forest in a growing state, healthy state again, before we're hit by another insect or, or disease, because it's coming down the pipeline, and we don't want to be double-whammied while we're in decline. We really need to get our numbers back up, so we can take the next one that's coming down the pipeline and, and be healthy and hold our, our forest status quo at the very least. So, we get through this backlog of ash trees, really, our goal should be planting two trees for every tree removed. That gets us back into the 80s and 90s, to where we were building our population up a little bit. We estimate that we have about 15,500 tree sites in the community, so we're about 5,000 or 400, 4,000-some trees away from filling the parkways. We've also turned our attention, because we're at the end of maybe by sometime in 2018, having our city ash trees either treated or removed to the private sector. We have a number of private ash trees, we've inventoried through volunteers about 2/3rds of our community, and found somewhere along the lines of around 500 ash trees. And so, our intent is to, first of all, inform the public that they have an ash tree. Secondly, it's to inform them whether it's treatable or not, and what treatments are available, and thirdly, if it's not treatable, what are some of the options that they need to think about. Tree removals are more expensive now than they were 10 or 15 years ago, and it's a big chunk of change, so people really need to save money for these kinds of things. So, we, the volunteers defined, I think, three health categories of the conditions that these trees were in. We sent letters out to all of the ones, over the 2/3rds of the city that we did inventory, a letter stating that we would be willing to treat the tree if they were willing to pay for the chemicals. So, this program, the idea behind it was, is, is to afford a small amount of money from the city, to assist people in acknowledging they have an ash tree and that it is treatable, and to give them a little time, if, if the tree's treatable, to decide in a two-year timeframe, when they need to either re-treat the tree or remove the tree, what they, a little time for them to decide what to do. Treatment is about a tenth of the cost of removal, so treatment is really the way to go economically, at least in the short term, if trees are treatable. And so, the result of that effort this year was that we treated 43 trees under this program. We call it the EBAT program, it's Emerald Ash Bor Assessment and Treatment Program. 15 of those trees were city parkway trees, eight of those we did under our own program with budgeted dollars, seven residents funded city tree treatment, and there were 28 private property trees that were treated, for a total of 40, 43 trees. We recuperated $3,500 from the residents in this program. Any questions?
Questions? Dennis?
What, how do you determine what is a treatable tree? Is it the size, or is it the species of ash or something?
Very good question, it's how alive it is, really.
Its current condition of health.
Right. The chemical companies stipulate that a tree can be almost 70% defoliated and still be treated and saved. We're a little more conservative, what we were looking for were trees that were at least 50% foliated, to, before we would invest our time and, and the residents' money and the chemical to treat the trees.
And is it a treatment that requires a year of treatment? You're saying you're inducing chemicals into the tree's system, which, I guess, is unpleasant for the ash borer to live in or something, I don't know how that works out, but how, is it a year-long treatment program, or is it longer than that?
There's several different kinds of programs, what we're using is, is the program that's 99% effective, it's a two-year treatment, so it lasts for two years before it needs to be re-treated. Generally, now, they say in very high populations that every year may be recommended. You can, you can't treat any, any, you have to have a 12-month period between treatments, but generally, it's every two years.
Is there a home remedy that a person could use without purchasing expensive equipment or chemicals? I mean, is there like a lime juice and Clorox, you know, solution that you can induce and get the results?
There was a soil drench that we were all perfuding to the residents and, and the general populace, to easily treat trees, and it, as it turns out, after looking at over 500 trees, year in and year out, this particular chemical would allow the tree to live longer, but the tree would eventually succumb to EAB. So, it was about a five-year extension in its life compared to the injected trees. Now, the injection system that we're using is a little safer, it's a water-based chemical versus a oil-based, and I don't, don't believe it's a restricted-use pesticide, so, although it can be purchased by non-professionals, it should, should still be applied by professionals, because it's injected, it's actually injected into the chineum of the, the tree, so the tree has to be drilled, and somebody should really know what they're doing, so they don't damage a tree when they're doing that.
Any other questions? Aaron.
So, then, even in the development projects that we're working on, your recommendation for the, for every tree removed, two trees be planted, is that something that would be taken into consideration, Laurie? Just wanted to see if you were still awake over there. The, no, seriously, I mean, we just had a project that looks like it's going to have, I don't know, 10, 15 trees be removed, and you're saying that we need to do a double-up, is that a part of your assessment?
I think, historically, yes, for development, insects, disease, all the, the devastations that our urban forest goes through, being an urban forest, you have to be a two-to-one type of replacement program to, to, to build that urban forest up over time, a minimum of two-to-one, but yes, to answer your question, it, it covers development and all the ups and downs of, of our urban forest.
So, it's not something that, I don't even think this is a question for you, or maybe there's a, some sort of combination or collaboration between the Arbor Division and community development, but if we have a, say, for instance, Dollar General purchase on the corner of, what is that, Philo and...
Washington.
And Washington, there are several trees there that are going to have to be removed, but they don't have the luxury of Cunningham Children's Home to say, we'll just plant 10 more someplace else on our 35 acres or something like that, so, just wondering how we, if you have recommendations to the community development department on how something like that could be rectified? Is there other, other places? Could a community development agreement include some of these, was it 635 sites that need to be, that could be new locations for replanting? So, if Dollar General wants to come in and buy, and, and buy that land, maybe part of that agreement is that then they have to contribute X amount of dollars to those sites that need to be replaced or something, if it requires tree removal? I'm just trying to throw something out there that might be workable, I don't know.
No, I, I think that's a very, very good comment, and in fact, you know, we look to be as multifaceted as we can in our tree replacement, such as, we're, we're working CD and Public Works on a new ordinance about tree planting and new subdivisions. We have tree planting requirements for new developments, for parking lots, I mean, all of those factors help get trees into the community and should be thought about. Tree planting programs on our own end of, of getting volunteers to help us and seeking people who want trees in, in different neighborhoods of the community would also help too, and if we can promote that more, that would help as well.
All right, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Is there a motion?
Move that we send this to council with recommendation for approval?
A second.
All right, motion by Aaron, seconded by Dennis. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion carries. Seeing no further business in front of the committee, this meeting is adjourned.